You want it or I'll bow to the other?
Councillors, ladies and gentlemen, please be standing for the Mayor of Clarence, Councilman Raymond Law.
Hello, welcome all. Before proceeding, I pay my respects to the Murrinna people as the traditional and original custodians of the lands on which we meet, and I acknowledge the continual connection of the Tasmanian Aboriginal people to the skies, land and waterways. I pay respect to elders past and present. Before we commence with tonight's council meeting, please let us all pause for a quiet moment of reflection and respect. Thank you, councillors, please be seated. Well, good evening and welcome to the Clarence City Council meeting of Monday, the 28th of August 2023. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube, and what is said in this meeting is not protected by privilege, and there is link to the agenda papers on council's website. I note there's a full house tonight, so no apologies. Moving on to item number three, declarations of interest of councillors or close associates. Are there any declarations from councillors? There being none, we now heading to our omnibus items. The first one being 4.1 confirmation of the minutes, that the minutes of the council meeting held on the 7th of August 2023 have been circulated. Are there any issues arising? Moving now on to item number four, mayor's communication, and my diary entries from the 8th of August through till to the 25th of August have been circulated, as well as the deputy mayor and councillor Kennedy attending events on my behalf. I'd also like to table a letter from Air Services Australia regarding airport, sorry, Hobart Airport noise abatement procedure trial. Council workshops as listed in the agenda. Tabling of petitions, 4.4 CO. Are there any petitions?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. We now move on to reports from outside bodies. We note that the quarterly summary of its meeting of the Copping Refuge disposal site joint authority has been for the period ended the 11th of August in this section, and quarterly report in the closed meeting. Councillor Walker, would you like to add anything else? Thank you, councillor. Southern Waste, Southern Tasmanian Regional Waste Authority, councillor Warren, anything to add there? Thank you. And there's nothing from a Tas Water Corporation perspective. With regards to the Greater Hobart Committee, I just note that Wednesday, the Greater Hobart Mayor's Forum will meet for our strategy and our planning session. I would also like in this, in this section to table the minutes of the Southeast Region Development Association General Meeting, SURA, which was held last Thursday, the 24th of August, and I table those minutes. Colleagues, are there any other reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies that you'd like to table? Councillor Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to table the meeting minutes from the Australian Coastal Councils Association, which I'm a member of, and while it's not required, I just think it would be nice to raise awareness of this association.
Wonderful. Thank you, councillor Hunter. Any other colleagues wish to table? Right, moving on then. 4.6, our weekly briefing reports. The weekly briefing reports of the 7th, 14th and 21st of August 2023 have been circulated to councils. Are there any matters arising? Councillor James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I refer to the minute of weekly briefing report of the 21st of August, a planning appeal decision on 36 Lowata Road, Lindisfarne. In that, it refers to, and I quote, "It has come to the attention of the planning team that this application has not been dealt with in the usual way, following a council decision on a planning permit. Officers acted within their delegation to undertake negotiations on behalf of council during a mediation process at TASCAT, but did not come back to council for the final decision on the proposed consent agreement." My question is, and direct it to yourself, Mr. Mayor, and that is, are we in a position or will we be writing to TASCAT to explain that this was not done in accordance with prior arrangements, or in accordance with what has happened in relation to other consent agreements where they have come back to council? And will we be writing to TASCAT to explain the circumstances and as to whether or not there needs to be some communication that would have to be referred to the representatives that did actually put in representations, and perhaps did not, or did not become aware of the fact that council did not follow the normal procedures in relation to a consent agreement? Perhaps if the general manager, through you, Mr. Mayor, of course, the general manager could explain, A, how this occurred, as it is the first time in my experience in the 30 years I've been in this place, that a consent agreement hasn't come back to council elected representatives for certification, and B, also if he could explain as to whether we should be writing to TASCAT and explain the circumstances and seek their, their direction.
Councillor James, thank you. I provided quite a bit of latitude there with, with the length of that question. I will direct that to the CEO. This is a matter that was discussed at some length at Friday's agenda briefing, but I do appreciate the reason why you brought it here to open council tonight, and I'll call on the CEO to provide an answer. Thank you, CEO.
Thank you, Mayor. As, as we've discussed in the agenda briefing on Friday, this, this consent agreement didn't come back to council, and that was a mistake by the officers who were involved. They weren't aware that it needed to come back, and that's highlighted a gap in our processes. As I indicated on Friday, the, the actions that were taken in agreeing to that consent agreement were consistent with our delegations. So from that perspective, there is no need to write to TASCAT, but we will write to the representatives who weren't a party to the appeal. Those, those representatives who were a party to the appeal obviously have not only got awareness of the consent agreement, but actually were party to that agreement as well.
Just supplementary.
Thank you, councillor James.
Mr. Mayor, will it be a matter that in future, if we do have, obviously, a mediation process and where a consent agreement does occur, is there some mechanism in place so that the same, or this error that occurred in this instance does not occur in the future?
Thank you, councillor James. The short answer is, if there's any silver lining to this situation, is that this is, this is obviously front and centre of everyone's attention now, and I've been assured by the CEO and his team that there are processes in place, that this will not happen again. I will just make the point, whilst it is regrettable, mistakes do happen from time to time. I'm human, like the next person. That, as soon as that mistake was identified, elected members were notified by that memo, and steps have been taken with regards to procedure within the council to ensure, as much as humanly possible, this does not happen again, but it certainly is, as I say, front and centre of everyone's attention. CEO, is there anything you'd like to add?
Thank you, Mayor. It's important to highlight that it's not every consent agreement that needs to be brought back to council. It's only those agreements where they have an outcome that is substantially different to the decision of council. So in nearly every instance, that's a situation where there has been a refusal by council to approve a development application. It's been appealed by the applicant, and the consent agreement is, is recommending approval with conditions. There's no other circumstance in which a consent agreement would be brought back to council. So we do have, have circumstances where an approval might be appealed by a representing party, and that, there may be a consent agreement with some amended permit conditions, but it's still an approval, and that's still within the ambit of, of our ability to deal with that in, in the tribunal at that point.
Thank you, councillor James. Are there any other matters arising from colleagues from the weekly briefing reports? There being none. I know we're at the end of our omnibus items. Can I have a mover of the omnibus? Thank you, councillor Chong. Seconded councillor Kennedy, thank you very much. All those in favour? Unanimous. Thank you, colleagues. We now move on to section number five, item number five, which is public question time. And as we commence public question time, I would like to remind everyone of the meeting procedures as they relate to questions. Public question time provides an opportunity, opportunity for people to ask questions about council's activities, not to make statements. Anyone wishing to address council or make a statement may do so under the deputation section of the council meeting agenda. As chairperson, I may refuse to accept a question, and if I do, I will provide reasons for it, for that. Equally, I may indicate that I will take a question on notice. A copy of the procedures for public question time can be found on council's website or by request from the council offices. A link is also provided in the agenda. Moving on to, moving on to 5.1, my apologies, public, public questions on notice. There, there's two questions from Mr. Bradley Walker of Howra. CEO.
Thank you. The first question from Mr. Walker reads as follows. At council's meeting on the 17th of July 2023, Ian Nelson is recorded at 15 minutes and 55 seconds on the recorded meeting video, saying that council have six months to decide whether to progress or withdraw an infringement notice. What section of which act or policy governs this six-month timeframe stated? The answer to that question is the infringement notice referred to in the meeting was an infringement issued under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act 1993. In this specific situation, as a notice of election had not been lodged, council had the option to either withdraw the infringement notice pursuant to section 23 of the Monetary Penalties Enforcement Act 2005, or within six months, refer the infringement notice to the Director of Monetary Penalties in accordance with section 18 subsection 2b of that act.
Thank you, CEO. And the second question, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Second question reads as follows. It has become very apparent in recent meetings that there is confusion between the public wanting to ask questions at meeting and the chairperson around what preamble can be given before a question. There is no time restraint on the question itself, and an allotted 15 minutes for public question time, which has not been recently exceeded. Could the chairperson please give an estimate to what they see as acceptable time for introductory information on the actual question?
Well, thank you, CEO. I'll respond to that one. I thank Mr. Walker for his question, and as there has been some commentary around this issue, I'll now provide a detailed response. Council's adopted policy regarding public question time allows for a maximum of 15 minutes at an ordinary council meeting for question, questions from members of the public. Questions can be asked in two ways. A maximum of two questions may be submitted in writing and be put on notice before the council meeting, which will be listed on the agenda for the meeting. One question may be raised from the public gallery without notice during the public question time segment of the agenda. The allocated time period of 15 minutes is for both questions on notice to be read out, and questions to be asked without notice at the meeting, plus responses to those questions. Questions without notice will be depended on available time at the meeting. Provided time is available, each person in the public gallery will be given an opportunity to ask one question without notice. Subject to available time, and in the event that no other members of the public presence seek to ask questions without notice at the meeting, the chairperson may allow further questions from the public gallery. Public question time provides an opportunity for people to ask questions about council's activities, not to make statements. Anyone wishing to address council or make a statement may do so under the deputation section of the council meeting agenda. The meeting procedures state that, and I quote, "All questions and answers must be kept as brief as possible," end quote. This means that lengthy preambles to questions are to be avoided. A short statement to provide context may be acceptable, subject to the, to any determination by the mayor. Importantly, if a person wishes to make a longer statement to council, that should be undertaken via a deputation, which allows up to three minutes for a statement to council. Questions or answers are not to be debated. In summary, if a preamble is warranted, I will allow it. However, if in my opinion it is unwarranted, then it will be disallowed. To be clear, as chairperson, that is my prerogative. If in the interest of fairness, a preamble that is not a statement is justified, then I will allow. Otherwise, I will insist, as I have done since being elected, that the question be put. So we now move on to 5.3, answers to previous questions taken on notice. There are none. Questions point, sorry, 5.4, questions without notice. Are there any questions from the gallery? Mrs. Marsh, name and suburb, please.
I'm Joanne Marsh Belray. All the uncontrolled pedestrian refuge islands in Belray Village, which has a high level of pedestrian and vehicular traffic, have been removed for a week. This is an ongoing occurrence when developments are in progress in my local area. Pedestrians are left to their own devices to negotiate dangerous footpaths and road crossings. All pedestrians and particularly those with a disability are made vulnerable by this situation. So my question is, when council authorises changes to pedestrian conditions or approves the traffic management plan, what risk assessments are undertaken, and how is risk managed and effectively monitored by the responsible officers for the duration of the work?
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. That was a long preamble, but a very good question, thank you. And I'll ask Mr. Graham to provide an answer, please.
Through, Mr. Mayor. I'll provide, take that on notice because it requires a detailed answer to make sure Mrs. Marsh's question is answered properly.
Thank you. And if I may, Mrs. Marsh, that might be an example of some, a question that could be put on notice in writing, so that then a detailed answer is provided at this meeting in a future forum. But thank you for the question. I drove through Belray Village on Saturday and saw you and Mr. Marsh there inspecting work, so thank you for your interest. Are there any other questions from the gallery? There being none, we move there. Are there any deputations by members of the public? CEO.
No, ma'am.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item number seven, 7.1. The council now intends to act as a planning authority under the, under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act of 1993. 7.1, which is an application for 923 and 1015 Grasstree Hill Road, Grasstree Hill, a combined scheme amendment and permit application boundary adjustment. I'll call for a mover of the recommendation, please. Thank you, councillor James. Is there a second? Thank you, councillor Goine. Councillor James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been a, a very interesting pro, process because a number of us were contacted in relation to this slight boundary adjustment. It really is only about four or, or six metres in the actual dimensions where there is a building which is basically on the boundary, which there needs to be some demarcation between the two. There has been a number of requests made to us prior to this matter coming to council on the very cost of this particular matter. But then again, it falls within a lot of the, the processes that would require any amendment to, or a combined scheme amendment and permit application. I think it's appropriate if, I don't know if, Mr. Mayor, as to whether I could ask the acting city planner just to explain as to why the cost of this had to be borne at that expense, at that, at that number in relation to the, the matter, because, as I mentioned in the introduction, it was only a minor change, and under that particular circumstance, you may have thought that there may have been some re, or calculation of that as part of the costs because of a large amendment or a large proposal coming forward as far as amendment to the scheme. You would expect that to be substantial in cost because of the number of, of actions that need to be taken in relation to the zoning and so on. So that's all I want to say, but perhaps in my, in my comment I made a moment ago, is it possible for the acting city planner at this stage, Mr. Mayor, to make a comment in relation to that?
Thank you, councillor James. Well, thank you. As you know, I direct with the questions case. I'll direct that to the CEO. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm happy to provide an answer to that, councillor James. As you're aware, council sets its fee schedule each year. This fee schedule doesn't make distinction between the relative size of an amendment, and from a council point of view, the amount of land that's involved still generates effectively the same amount of work. And as you are aware, a scheme amendment is a significant piece of work because it is an amendment to the whole planning scheme for that particular area. So unfortunately, in this case, yes, it's, it's minor on the ground, but it's still a significant piece of work.
Councillor Goine. Right, thank you. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? There being none. Councillor James. Well, I'll put, put the motion. Thank you very much. All those in favour. So carried, thank you unanimously. Moving now on to item 7.2, development application for 74 Bengali Street, Lauderdale. Additions and alterations in carport retrospective. Councillor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move the alternative motion.
Thank you, councillor Kennedy, and that's seconded by the deputy mayor, and that alternative motion has been circulated to colleagues. Thank you very much. It's on the screen, I believe. Thank you. Councillor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep this brief as I feel it's fairly self-explanatory. But can I say that this is, this alternative motion is a reflection, not at all on our planning stuff. I'd really like to underline that. We've said in here many times, the planning scheme is not a one-fits-all solution to all planning matters, which leaves planning stuff at times with the hands very much tied. But this is where we as elected members can exercise, and I hate to use it again, but I will, a little bit of common sense in a situation that's pretty basic. Most of my colleagues have visited the site, so they are pretty familiar with it. As outlined in the reasons before you, the retrospective approval of the carport has minimal, if any, impact on the current or future streetscape. As outlined, there is minimal opportunity for a setback precedent in Epping Road. There's been no representations against this retrospective approval for the carport, and I see council support. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Deputy mayor, councillor Ritchie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased to support the alternative. On a very broad level, of course, planning schemes are about achieving strategic land used, land use outcomes, both, you know, current land use decision-making and of course also looking forward to the future and protecting things that our communities care about and the special places in which we like to live. With the planning instruments that we have available, the relevant assessment benchmarks are established against which to assess proposed developments. And very occasionally in this place, we need to think about the instruments, the functions and actions provided for under the planning scheme in a different way, because sometimes the ruler or the gauges against which the proposed development is measured to determine compliance might lead to a suboptimal planning outcome. And I think this is one of those occasions where, you know, common sense needs to prevail. As councillors are well aware, and particularly I know many of my colleagues visited the site and took the time out to have a really good look at the carport in question. And the issue around the frontage of Epping Road becoming the primary frontage, following a subdivision at the site being, of course, unfortunate and central to the issue around the preliminary refusal recommendation. And as councillor Kennedy has said, absolutely taking nothing away from the council staff on why they've arrived at that, because they needed to. And the flexibility needs to be shown here. So I would go so far as to say that the, the carport in question is entirely in keeping with, with the surrounding area. It's low. It's, you know, it's very flat. It's, the visibility is low from the street frontage. And in fact, I took the time to take photos of neighbouring properties that were also in Epping Street, how close their garages and structures were to each other and to boundary fences related to their property. And this was not inconsistent with some of the other things that were going on in, in that area. So generally speaking, I believe that applying a planning scheme that is clear and consistent is an important guiding principle. But so too is the need to implement decisions that are balanced, fair, mindful of the impact on people and livelihoods, and that allow for flexibility. So I think that this is one of those rare occasions where we can give that, this type of consideration, and I'm happy to support the alternative motion on that basis.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor Hume, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, look, this, this is a very sensible outcome. It's, I mean, it's interesting. We, we've had two planning matters that we're looking at that, that are very similar. There was one in Seven Mile Beach where you've got a similar situation where you've got a, a structure that does come a long way forward compared to other structures in the street. But it's a street that's dominated by high fences, and therefore the, the structures are actually quite unobtrusive. But we've got an interesting situation in our planning scheme where we define the, the shortest dimension as the primary frontage, whereas if you had a dispassionate observer who looked at that house and said, you ask them without any knowledge of the planning scheme, what would you consider to be the primary frontage? It would be along Bengali Street where the, where the front door of the house is, you know, not the, not the big side fence, which is, which is essentially at the side of the house. So that's a, that's a very strange aspect of the scheme. I also found it interesting in, in looking at this matter. I was curious to know what the objectives were, the relevance, in the relevant standard. And the planning officers referred to in the port, report that the objective that they rely on is, provides reasonably consistent separation between dwellings and their frontage within a street, which is kind of self-explanatory. I mean, it's, it's, it's as if the, the means is in itself. But, but essentially, what we all know and what common sense tells us is, actually, the point of this use standard is to maintain an attractive streetscape. If you've got a short streetscape that's already dominated by high fences that, you know, essentially looks like the side of the backs of people's houses rather than the fronts of people's houses, then, you know, really, there's no, there's no need to maintain the attractiveness. The attractiveness isn't there. It, it's dominated by a high fence, and you're basically looking at a fence, and then a carport that only protrudes slightly above that fence. And really, I think the important point is, is not just that this carport is unobtrusive, but also that if you set the, the standard with the carport in relation to setbacks, anything else that is developed in that street with a similar setback isn't really going to threaten the, the streetscape or the visual appeal of that street. In both the decisions that we've looked at, this one and the, and the Seven Mile Beach one, those arguments aren't going to get the opportunity to be tested in the, in the tribunal. I'd be interested to know what the tribunal would make of it. But given there's no representatives, there's no one to appeal it. But I, I think it's an eminently sensible outcome, and I thank councillor Kennedy for her work on this motion.
Thank you, councillor Hume. Councillor Walker.
Yes, look, having read over it, I will be supporting this, this alternative motion, and like many, I did go down and see the carport. And I can say if it was a case of any carport in a hailstorm. And I can say if it was a case of any carport in a hailstorm, I'd pick this one, it's really well built. Couple of points. Common sense has been raised as, as the reason, as, as one of the major points in this situation, and eminently on, on that framework is, it is appropriate to, to look at the development application. But fundamentally, when, when we're sitting as a planning authority, we are, you know, we are feted in many aspects, but we also have discretion, and this certainly fits within our parameters of discretion. So all things weighed up, I think it's appropriate to support it. I would also note that with retrospective applications, the fees are higher, and it's totally appropriate to incentivise prospective applications rather than retrospective applications.
Thank you, thank you councillor Walker. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? There being none, councillor Kennedy, you write a reply please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to thank colleagues for their contributions. They put it so much more succinctly and eloquently than I did, but I seek council support. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kennedy, I'll put the motion, the alternative motion, all those in favour. That's unanimous, thank you colleagues. Council now concludes its deliberations as a planning authority under the Land Use of Planning and Approvals Act of nineteen ninety-three. We're moving now on to item number eight, moving on to eight point two point, oh sorry, eight point two regarding asset management. Eight point two point one, consultation on future upgrade of widening a pass road between Glebe Hill Road and Connor Place. There's a recommendation before us regarding consultation, I'll call for a mover of the recommendation, please. Thank you councillor James, is there a second? Thank you councillor Kennedy, councillor James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and may I say from the outset that this has been a long process and as far back as, I think, two thousand and five, there were, were discussions in this place in relation to the actual upgrade of the, of the road and pass road, and also to, there were some numbers mentioned back then of the, in the order of about four million dollars. Of course, over time, that has changed, and there is now this proposal to meet what is now regarded as a subarterial road, which is part and parcel of the process that would obviously cater for the traffic in that vicinity, given the development that's occurred. The council has powers under the Local Government Act of nineteen ninety-three, TAS, and the Land Acquisition Act to purchase land. Under section one seven five of the Local Government Act nineteen ninety-three, TAS, council may purchase property for any purpose which it considers to be of benefit to the, to the council or the community. Under section one seventy-six of the Local Government Act, council may require for prescribed purposes in accordance with the Land Acquisition Act of nineteen ninety-three. The Local Government General Regulations further prescribe that council may require land, acquire land for the establishment or realignment of a highway or local highway as defined by section three. And the very nature of that is it has to go through a process, and the actual recommendation that's before us this evening, in fact, initiates the consultation process with property owners, excuse me, in the pass road between Glebe Hill Road and Connor Place on the future upgrade and widening project for pass road. Excuse me, including consultation on the concept design. This is, has been a, a, a process that has to continue, in my opinion, and I think that the council needs to proceed along these lines and initiate the consultation process, which is part and parcel of the process to upgrade what is a rural road, which was a coat, a coach road, I think at one stage it may have been, and also to what has now become as part of a sub arterial road. So, Mr. Mayor, it starts, it starts the process. Council has allocated funding for this, and also one of the major developers in the area has contributed over a million dollars for their part in the process of widening that section of road that abuts their property in pass road. I seek council support.
Thank you councillor James, councillor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just look forward to receiving the feedback from the consultation process.
Thank you. Councillor Chong, I, I was sort of dead heat between you and councillor Kennedy to second it, anything you'd like to contribute?
No, no, thank you.
Thank you. Any other colleagues like to make a contribution? Well, that being the case, councillor James. I'll put the motion then, please, between the recommendation, all those in favour. That's unanimous, thank you colleagues. Moving now on to eight point four, noting there's no financial management matters at eight point three, the eight point four being governance, the quarterly report to thirty June twenty twenty-three has been circulated, I'd ask for a mover of the, thank you councillor Chong, seconded councillor Kennedy, councillor Chong.
Just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, can I commend the staff with, in regards to the quarterly report, it is clear, easy to read, a really excellent production.
Thank you councillor Chong, councillor Kennedy.
Councillor Chong took the words right out of my mouth, it's a really user-friendly document that we have now, and we've progressed so far, and I congratulate the officers on their work on this.
Thank you councillor Kennedy, any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution to this item? Councillor, sorry councillor Walker, apologies.
Apologies required, and again, the, the format is, is to be commended. Turning to page fifteen, looking at item Cambridge Oval Dog Park, and I note the final sentence, which is construction documentation to be finalised and aim to start construction in early twenty twenty-four. And it's my, yeah, and I've, I've double checked the budget papers for the budget passed, and we indeed, indeed allocate funding for this project. I'm just wanting to, and I know that this is, if you like, the, the last of last year, but just for comfort, can you confirm that the late twenty twenty-four, subject to funding approval for construction, that, that late twenty twenty-four is, is not the actual date for adoption we're working at, given what is being said about starting construction in early twenty-four?
Thank you councillor Walker. Mr. Graham, are you in a position to provide an answer, please?
Through, Mr. Mayor, I will check with staff, but I, I know the design is well underway at the moment, I would certainly anticipate construction to commence this financial year, but I'll, I'll provide an update with councillors once I check with staff.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Councillor Walker.
Yes, look, another question I have relates to page sixty-four, item six point seven, which is the establishment of a workplace equality respect implementation team. Can I be furnished with the scope of the team, its remit and who sits on it, please?
Yes, we'll certainly provide that to councillor Walker, I think actually that should be provided to, in a weekly brief report to all, to all councillors, thank you.
Perhaps I could also be provided, and perhaps maybe it'll be easier to provide an answer to what the outdoor consultative committee, which is mentioned in six point six and six point seven, what its scope, breadth and membership consists of as well. And if you can even part answer any of that, that would be appreciated now, rather than a, a later one in a briefing item, it's good for these items to be put in the public forum.
Councillor Walker, thank you. So, are you able to, noting that the HR directors are here tonight, are you able to?
Yes, I am able to provide a response. The outdoor consultative committee and workplace improvement committees are internal employee representative bodies, there are management representatives as well as employee representatives there, and they fulfil a role as part of our enterprise agreement and also our work health and safety obligations in terms of managing the workplace and keeping good communication and consultation lines open.
Any other questions on this?
I'm sure, I appreciate that, the elements of the answer there, and I'm sure that the bit that we circulated will provide some further detail as well.
Thank you councillor Walker, councillor James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I refer to the weekly, not the weekly briefing, the report, the quarterly report, and on page eighty, it refers to the Capital Works Year-to-Date Summary from the first of July twenty-two to the thirty of June. On that page, it has carryovers and adjustments of thirty-five million dollars, thirty-five point one four four million dollars, and the total budget for twenty-two, twenty-three is fifty-one. My question to you is, is it anticipated that the carryovers and adjustments that have been identified on page eighty will be, obviously, meet the timeline for those projects, or will there be a further carryover for the next budget twenty-two, twenty-four, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four?
Thank you for the question councillor James, this was something that was well ventilated at the time of, of the budget, so thank you for the question. Mrs. Mulder, are you in a position, please?
Yes, through, Mayor, that carryover there is coming from the twenty-one, twenty-two year into the twenty-two, twenty-three, and the unspent funds there will most likely be all carried over into twenty-three, twenty-four.
Does that mean that those projects that were in the twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one?
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
Sorry, twenty-one, twenty-two have not been started or haven't, are not in progress?
No, just some of the unspent funds in those projects, the ones that were in progress have been carried over, some of those will now have been completed, and the unspent funds at the end of this year could relate to those projects or could relate to twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three projects as well.
Thank you councillor James. Colleagues, any other questions arising from this, the quarterly report? Councillor Chong, would you care to write a reply?
Please, my colleagues support.
Wonderful, thank you, I'll put the, put the motion, it's through, to accept the quarterly report of April to June twenty twenty-three, all those in favour. That's unanimous, thank you very much colleagues. Moving now on to item nine, motions on notice, the first one being nine point one, notice of motion, councillor Ritchie, review of the forty-two day development application timeframe. Is there a second? Thank you councillor Kennedy, deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really pleased to be here this evening to put forward this motion, and I'd like to start by thanking colleagues for their contributions in between the time when we passed the last motion on the seventeenth of July and to this motion getting here today. Also, thank you to the CEO and the planning staff for their input, it was much appreciated, and the input that was received from the Local Government Association. I don't think I need to go over in too much detail the principles of why we're here, because I think we've addressed that in the substantive discussion that we had at the previous council meeting, other than to just reiterate that, in essence, this is about trying to start the conversation at a statewide level around a provision that frankly, I think most of us would agree, is significantly, the consequences of which are significantly too hard, and the balance is just not right. And the fact that we as councillors are not able to, as a result of, of this provision, provide representation to our communities for people to be fairly heard and the opportunity to represent being denied in terms of this provision of the planning scheme, I think, is simply too great. That's why I think it's really important that it's ventilated. I know from feedback that I've had that this is an issue that's not new, it's echoed around other councils, it's certainly echoed around other planning staff at other councils. So hopefully, if we pass this motion this evening, it'll be a wonderful opportunity to have our colleagues at the Local Government Association come together and start working on it, because if we don't do it at that level, we won't get anywhere. It nee, it really needs to be done from a sector-wide perspective, so that's why I've taken the approach, the approach that I have. And I, you know, hopefully, with the support of colleagues this evening, will look forward to seeing this matter progress at that other level. So I ask colleagues for their support. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor, councillor Kennedy.
Nothing further to add, Mr. Mayor, just to thank the mover of the motion for the motion.
Thank you. Any other colleagues wishing to, councillor Hume, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, as the CEO has noted these comments on the motion, this is something that is open to misuse, and we have seen examples of that misuse, where people have timed their applications to ensure that they get dealt with under delegated authority rather than undergoing the scrutiny of the full council. And the important principle here is that, yes, there are certain criteria that should be applied to which development applications get dealt with under delegated authority, and which ones go to the full council. And I think we can all agree that the timing of the application shouldn't be one of those criteria. But I, I congratulate the deputy mayor on this motion because what she is proposing is, is something that involves the local government sector across Tasmania in developing the solution. There are a number of potential solutions, there's a number of ways in which the state government, should they wish to act, will, you know, could, could address this matter. And these, these are complex matters, we want to ensure there's no unintended consequences. But having the, having the weight of legat behind whatever's recommended, and also studying it thoroughly means that there will be a much more compelling argument to hopefully compel the Tasmanian government to, to act on this matter, and to put in place a, a planning system that gives development applications the scrutiny that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hume. Anyone else wish to make a contribution? Councillor Mulder, you seem to be rising, you have a call?
Always on the up and up, Mr. Mayor, always on the up and up.
That's the rumour.
I'm not too sure we need to.
Thank you councillor, you have a call councillor Mulder, the clock has started.
I'll save it for question time as to what you meant by that remark. This is about, this forty-two day rule is the shortest in the entire nation for planning matters. And I was a member of the legislative council for, at the time that this was introduced, and when these questions were raised, the planning minister at the time was the honourable Peter Gutwin, and he was quite adamant that that was what he wanted. In the meantime, a subsequent minister has been busily talking about how we need, we need to take the politics out of planning. This forty-two day rule takes the people out of planning. And it is so open to gaming, as councillor Hume has mentioned. In fact, we meet every, every twenty-one days. So an application lodged to us tomorrow morning gives us twenty days to bring it to the next council meeting. Twenty days for the council staff to do a proper preliminary assessment to see whether it needs to go out to public consultation. Within the net, within that twenty-one days, that twenty days, we then have to get it out and published in the media. We then have to give time for responses, and then those responses have to be assessed against the overall objectives of the programme, a report prepared and brought to council. If it's anything more than a carport, it's just not feasible, it's not possible. And then we end up in this silly situation where we either allow council to make a decision, and they themselves will tell you how uncomfortable they are with doing this by delegation instead of having the people's voice heard. So it really is a question of, we have been pushed down this path, it is, I would argue, a deliberate attempt to take the people out of planning and put the offices in a position where, you know, we, we, we end up in this ridiculous situation. So I think that it's a question of gaming it, and all I can say is that unless there's been a monumental shift in the, in the, in the thoughts of the government of the day, it is a great thing that we try once more, but the prospects of success are very limited.
Thank you councillor Mulder, any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to commend the mover of the motion, councillor Ritchie, for putting this forward, it's very much needed, in my view. And I like what councillor Mulder pointed out there, that it's taken the people out of planning. But to highlight something that hasn't been highlighted thus far is, it not only takes the community from the people's side out of planning, but also the importance of staff and the value we place on staff and the pressure that the forty-two day rule places on staff. And if something like this doesn't go forward where we extend that period of time, then councils really need to reconsider increasing their resources for planning staff because they can't keep up with the demands that they currently have. I support this motion.
Thank you councillor Hunter. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and may I say from the outset that I will not be supporting this motion. this motion and it's for the following reasons. The question, uh, that has been raised and it's in the notes that the general manager provided, and that is that there tends to be a misuse of this process as part of the, um, of meeting that or working within the forty-two day statutory timeline. And I, I just wonder as to whether or not the, the question that does arise here and the operation of the forty-two day rule is open to misuse in its current form. Now, some years ago, it was a sixty-day timeline and then it was changed as councillor Mulder mentioned, uh, at that time in the Legislative Council was suggested and was passed by the council at the time. The simple fact of the matter is there is two advertising timelines within the forty-two days. That's in the, uh, in, in the planning department, which by the very nature of meeting that Wednesday advertising, uh, date and obviously on the Saturday as part of the public notices. We do know that in a, a recent case or particular case of where the forty-two day rule was basically delegated to the offices because the applicants or the proponents refused to, um, grant an extension of time. But I pointed out at that time, there was a, a, a clear timeline that the extra information that was required was provided within a day of the request. So that meant it left, like, you know, the time for the staff to be able to proceed with the advertising, uh, over that two weeks timeline, which by the very nature already started to eat into the forty-two days and therefore it basically had the whole thing sort of on a, on a, on a bit, uh, a tight timeline to be able to meet that particular council meeting. I said at the time and at this, in this place, that council does have its disposal, a number of ways in which to keep within the forty-two timeline. Firstly, it can actually, I, in my opinion, do something about those advertising times of the Wednesday and the Saturday that appear within that fourteen day window to be basically brought into a, a shorter timeline so that there is that advertising and there is that opportunity to be able to, um, meet, in my opinion, the council's meeting of that, um, particular forty-two days, uh, deadline. The other, the other thing that's, uh, is of importance, I believe, and I did mention it in our discussion previously, and that is that council does have an opportunity to call a special meeting. And it has done that at times leading up to Christmas, when we've called a special meeting to tidy up a lot of outstanding DAs or DA's that obviously weren't needed to be done before Christmas and before the, the breakup of the, uh, of the festive season, for the festive season. So we have used a special meeting and I would have thought that in the circumstances that we could have done that and therefore we would have been able to, at, at the normal notice that's given, that needs, uh, to be provided within that, that timeline, for, uh, notification to be given for a special meeting to handle, uh, development applications so that we do actually work through the process and have them before council within the forty-two days. I don't know as to whether there has been any other information and perhaps the mover of the motion can in her, uh, right of reply, provide what the other councils have said or have actually alluded to in relation to this and as to whether or not they have been knocking at her door because she has done some research in relation to this, as to whether or not they are of the opinion that the forty-two days is too short and therefore it ought to be, uh, basically be, um, changed as part of the motion to go to the, um, uh, the local government, uh, local government association to request and convene a reference group. So, Mr Mayor, I think the forty-two days is reasonable. I think we can meet those timelines and therefore I will not be support. And perhaps, uh, the right, uh, the deputy mayor in her right of reply could answer in her, in her response as to what other councils have done and whether her research has gone that far to enable and receive what they believe is an appropriate timeline in relation to this.
Councillor James, before I call another speaker, I think it's important to, for me to make a point of clarification is that is, and that is that the statutory timeframes associated here with advertising. So that, that's, they're not negotiable, which, you know, let the mover of the motion speak to this herself, but just to understand that there's no flexibility. And hence that's why the motions before us are severe. But CEO, do you wish to add anything further to that?
Um, no, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Walker, thank you.
Just very briefly, um, then I might, I wonder if you can confirm, uh, or through the general manager perhaps, the, as we look at other jurisdictions, the minimum, as I understand it at the moment, or the shortest frame elsewhere of Tasmania is sixty days? Is that?
Yeah, that's right.
Yep. So there's, so it's currently an eighteen day difference. And it is interesting, uh, we heard some commentary around the timeframes. Um, public holidays aren't taken into account and, and I guess the other, the other measure for staff is we get the report on the Wednesday before the Friday. So th- these are factors that are, that are to be, to be put into the mix. Um, and we have seen in other municipalities where things aren't gotten quite right, that there can be significant consequences. Um, and things might not get quite right when, when complicated proposals are to be, and have to be considered in short timeframes. Uh, so look, I will be supporting this. Um, and I could quibble for three or five minutes about some of the tone in point A. Uh, I won't. I mean, I think the gist is okay. Ultimately, most of this motion is around point B. And you might actually think that the forty-two day rule is completely satisfactory. You might think that it's a bit too long. And, and if you are of that mindset, then you shouldn't have any worry either with how, um, point B is written. Point, point B is generally agnostic other than to say, let's look at this issue, let's look at, um, how we're going about it and, and recommend, you know, changes, um, to ensure applications are, are not required to be resolved under delegation. I think that's, whatever you think, I think for or against, it's, it should be something that you should, we all should as a council be happy to back. I know that I am. So on that basis, I'm supporting the motion.
Thank you councillor Walker. Councillor Chong, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, I guess a couple of things. Uh, looking at the quarterly report, obviously we do meet the forty-two days on the vast majority of development applications that come before us. But there's a, I guess, a couple of things. Firstly, we don't always meet it. We can't always meet it. And I could name you two off the top of my head where we can see that the developer has deliberately said no to an extension or has put things in in time to make sure that they were done under delegated authority and it did, or things didn't have chance to come back here. And as councillor Mulder says, you know, that takes the community out of this equation and that's really important that they need to be able to deal with these things. The other thing is we meet every three weeks. Not every council meets every three weeks. Some of them only meet every four weeks. Complying with a forty-two day rule when you only meet every four weeks has to be very difficult and put a great deal of pressure on both the elected people and the staff. And I, and I guess finally, for us, yes, we, we meet regularly. We have a decent planet, sized planning department. But the pressure that gets put on those staff to comply with all of these things in a very short space of time, in, in some that are really quite technically difficult with a number of issues that need to be thought about, is unconscionable in many ways. We need to look at how we can extend that to make it fairer for everybody.
Thank you councillor Chong. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? There being none. Uh, de-, deputy mayor, your right of reply, please?
Um, thank you, Mr Mayor. And I thank colleagues for their, um, very well-considered contributions, um, in respect of the proposed, uh, motion. Um, just in response to, uh, councillor James, I'm taking from your contribution that you were, had issue with the fact that the term misuse appeared in the CEO's comments. Um, obviously, they are what they are. The CEO's comments are not relevant to the motion per se. Um, and then of course, you've raised issue about your view that the forty-two day rule, um, should stay as it is and that it's working satisfactorily, I think, if, if that's your view.
Through to the chair, please, deputy mayor.
Sorry, Mr Mayor. Um, so i- in response to that, um, clearly I don't think that it does. Um, I think that the purpose of this motion is to go to the sector on a broader scale and have that discussion. This is actually a fact-finding exercise to go through, see what other councils, see if they're feeling the same. It may be that, you know, the forty-two day rules is, remains the standard, but that there are some flexibility options built into it. It's not necessarily about saying we should wipe away the forty-two day rule as the benchmark of what councils should want to achieve. For me, it's about looking at how can we work through options that provide some flexibility where that cannot be achieved for legitimate reasons. Um, because of the pressure on staff, because of the timing of the application, because of when councils and the frequency of council meetings. All of those sorts of things come into play. So I, I think, and as councillor, uh, Walker has, I think, very rightly said, um, that's all this is about. And I don't see why anyone would have difficulty in supporting a motion that seeks to go to Legat, form a working committee to actually more thoroughly investigate this across the board. That's all we're essentially seeking to do. And I think, um, because of the issues that we've, we've seen arise out of it, that's why I feel quite strongly about it. I think it wouldn't be, I couldn't in good conscience, as a relatively new person to this place, sit back and not make a noise about what I see as a problem in the system. So that's why I'm doing what I'm doing and, um, I seek the support of colleagues.
Thank you deputy mayor. Um, colleagues, uh, item, um, nine point one, notice of motion, seeing in the name of councillor Ritchie, the deputy mayor. I'll put that to the vote. All those in favour? Those against? So carried. Thank you. Moving now on to item nine point two, notice of motion, seeing in the name of councillor Goine, review of options for cat registration system. Is there a second? Thank you councillor Hunter. Councillor Goine?
Um, as you've all obviously had time to read my notice of motion, um, I just wanted to add that in two thousand and nine, the initial Cat Management Act was put into place. Um, that obviously had supporting regulations to provide a broad framework for cat management within Tasmania, um, including the requirements for microchipping and management of facilities. In two thousand and fifteen, the government assessed the feral cat population and the result of that assessment was that it was severe and catastrophic to our native wildlife. In two thousand and nineteen, there are amendments made to the cat management plan. Um, and since then, this has been passed from tier to tier of government with nothing getting done. Um, I believe that we have the opportunity here to be proactive as a council. Um, the feedback I've had from constituents is generally, we thought this was already in place. Um, most people believe that this was already a policy. Um, so I do believe that we can be proactive here in ensuring that cats are actively managed in Clarence, um, the same way that our dog population is. Um, for me, this became highlighted as a significant concern because whilst we know about the detriment to wildlife in Tasmania, um, it is very, not so widely known that the issue with toxoplasmosis, which we know as wobbly opossum disease. Um, I myself have unfortunately, as a wildlife rehabilitator, had to euthanize many a wobbly opossum and other various mammals, um, marsupials, sorry. Um, in a survey, in the same survey I mentioned earlier, eighty-four percent of the feral cat population tested positive to toxoplasmosis. Um, as we know, the feral cat population starts out from, you know, pet, pet cats. Um, so it's really important that we manage the cats that we have in our area to ensure that the population of feral cats is not increasing. Um, as I'm sure most of you are aware now too amongst the council, I myself contracted toxoplasmosis at about fourteen weeks gestation. Um, and whilst my symptoms were quite mild, just thought I had a cold and a flu. They were lingering. Um, and during ultrasounds, um, things were ascertained to be proceeding as normal. I did give birth to a healthy baby boy. However, toxoplasmosis can have very far-reaching effects, not only on humans that can cause abortion or significant deformities. Um, however, the sheep population, uh, which I wasn't aware of until I started writing this policy, and, um, other animals as well are significantly affected. Um, just last week, after three lots of diagnostic testing, um, it was made aware to us that our son actually has a, um, hearing loss, uh, most likely caused because at that point in gestation that I contracted toxoplasmosis is as the hearing and the ear canal is being developed. Um, so whilst the government keeps passing the buck and saying it's too much money, they now have to foot the bill of my son's hearing aids, NDIS, you know, for the rest of his life. So we can talk dollars, but really at the end of the day, you can't put a cost on people's lives. And for me, this is obviously a very important issue. Um, largely we have a huge population of cats being taken to our shelters. Just the week before last, I had a constituent mention that they were told to release a feral cat that they had contained because under the Management Act, there really isn't any provisions for the management of that cat once it was contained. Um, also, I'm not sure if you're aware that, uh, one of our local feline fix programs just closed last week due to lack of funding. Um, they have rehomed, desexed over four hundred cats since their short lifespan. Um, so it is, is very pertinent, I think, that I urge my fellow councillors to support this motion to bring this to council as a priority, um, in developing a scoping document so that we can actively manage cats in Clarence. And I seek fellow councillor's support.
Thank you councillor Goine. Councillor Hunter?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to thank councillor Goine for putting this motion forward. I think it's very much needed and again, uh, thought some of this was already underway, um, but it's come to light that it isn't. Putting the human aspects aside, which is very relevant, which you have pointed out, councillor Goine, for me, invasive species is very dear to my heart, having worked in conservation land management. And in my local area, the South Arm Peninsula, feral cats have anecdotally and just through observations increased quite dramatically in the eleven years that I have lived there. I used to not see any and now I see them quite regularly driving down the street, running, walking, you name it. And a number of constituents have also contacted me, being concerned about this. What I particularly like about your motion is, uh, investigating declared areas for natural areas. Where the South Arm Peninsula has extensive areas of native bush and reserves and there is abundant wildlife, including populations of Tasmanian endemic birds. So I'm very keen to see this motion put forward and I will be supporting it.
Thank you councillor Hunter. Any other colleagues wishing... Councillor Darko, thank you.
Mr Mayor, I firstly want to extend deep sympathies to councillor Goine, um, for her experiences and thank her for bringing this forward. This has been an issue for far too long and I commend you for, uh, expediting this and hopefully we can see some more action on this if it's soon enough.
Thank you councillor Darko. Councillor Warren, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I also commend councillor, um, Goine for bringing this forward. Um, it's, uh, devastating the amount of native wildlife that a feral cat can destroy on an evening rampage. And hardly a week goes past without one of the local Facebook groups calling for, who owns this cat? Keep it off my property. Um, or this cat's, you know, yowling outside my window at all hours, or this cat has destroyed the bandicoots in the bottom of my garden. Um, so, and I, I noticed, you know, a while ago, I would have seen, you know, a regular supply of cats going through my property. Very rare now. I noticed that one of my neighbours has put in a cat run. I know a number of people have put in a cat run. So community attitudes have changed signif-, significantly over the last few years. One of my neighbours takes her cat for a walk on a leash. Um, you know, so it's...
I don't know who that is.
I thi-, I think the, the mood is changing. I think responsible cat ownership, like responsible dog ownership, is now something that we can work towards and, um, it can't come soon enough and I commend you for this motion.
Thank you councillor Warren. Councillor Chong, someone owns a significant cat run. Do you mind if we get into this discussion at all? It is, it is quite impressive. I think you probably needed a DA for it.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And it was included in the DA for my extension for the house. I'll just put that out there. And, and yes, John, we all understand the issues that feral cats cause, you know, and continue to cause, um, throughout our population. I think what's happened previously is a lack of funding for this. You know, the Cat Management Act was put into place, but there was no discussion in that about how anybody would fund it, let alone councils. We haven't established... We haven't established way of managing dogs. And even then, that actually costs us as a council quite, quite a deal of money. But there was no discussions about cats. And I think, I commend this motion because it talks about how we deal with that and how we look at that and how we come to that. Because I think if we're going to manage cats at all in, in Clarence, we need to find a way to look at that as part of a holistic approach.
Thank you councillor Chong. Deputy Mayor, councillor Ritchie, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, while we, we know there's currently no legislation in Tasmania that currently mandates, um, a cat registration system, um, I think it's acknowledged that cats are important parts of our lives, particularly, uh, as companion animals. And I know as a owner of two beautiful cats and as fa- having family members who own and, uh, love their own cats, um, they are very much part of, uh, people's families. Um, cats can also play a very important role in vermin control. Um, I think I can tell you that, um, you notice not having a cat if you live on a farm, very promptly. So, um, but we've also acknowledged that cats also play a complex role in the Tasmania community, particularly in relation to being invasive, um, animals impacting on our native wildlife and spreading disease. And it's those very opposite, um, and I guess some people would say polarised views about cats in the community that have made cat management a very difficult and emotive issue, I think, uh, for different levels of government to grapple with, notwithstanding the financial implications as well. We currently have the Cat Management Act, two thousand and nine, and associated regulations and the Tasmanian Cat Management Plan, twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two, which had some interesting concepts inside that around breaking up, uh, the management through both the existing act and another act, the Biodiversity Act, um, that they were looking at separating out potentially down the track, which I don't think any of that's happened, but, um, that was certainly mooted, um, in that particular management plan. Um, it discussed proposed legislative amendments to improve the framework to support the roles and responsibilities of state and local government in cat management. And I think we can all recognise that to be successful cat management will need to be a shared responsibility across all levels of government, business, community, to make progress towards achieving what they identified as the seven, um, objectives detailed in that, uh, particular Tasmanian Cat Management Plan. And that's going to take a good deal of cooperation. In particular, the need to clarify the roles and responsibilities of state and local government and the broader community, um, I think will need to be very important part of that conversation moving forward. The education, whatever registration system that, that may eventuate out of this. But, um, I think it's a really good idea that Clarence is, um, proactively advancing this as a topic that is deserving of, shall we say, renewed interest and attention in our municipality and across the state. So I congratulate councillor Goine for bringing this motion to council and I look forward to seeing what progress might be made in the future on this subject. So I'll be supporting the motion.
Councillor Mulder.
I think there's one thing we see that sort of need to get, um, and we don't have cats now and haven't had for many years, but, um, there was a time we did have one. And, um, I must say that, um, any idea that we would manage cats seems to me a little bit ridiculous because they, they spend all their life managing us. So, uh, um, just getting that point across, I think, look, um, I just don't get it. We get, we, we go to the point where we mandate microchipping, but not registration. You know, we mandate that cats must be contained, right? Um, and then we've got a problem with cats out there in the wild, devastating itself. Every cat that's out there, contain microchipped, uh, uncontained, microchipped or registered or anything else is a danger. It's their nature to prey on the small wildlife. So if it's out there, it's at large, it's not microchipped and, um, and it's, um, and it's not capable of rehabilitation. Um, what's this about, you know, not being prepared to put them down? And I, and I, individuals can't do it, and I know the cat management centres do and, and all those sorts of things. So that comes to the nub now. We ought to have this stuff in legislation which simply says that, you know, if it's, if, if it's not assessed as being it, then it is by default put down. If it's not capable of re- of being domesticated, I think are the words. But every time you get around this thing, and we've seen this, you know, at this council, how long have we spent with people who want to, you know, who, who, who think that a dog should be allowed to go anywhere at any time, off-leash, uh, with a fiction of effective control? But at least we have a go at it. But here, oh no, oh no, you know, that cute little moggy, you know, he wouldn't hurt anyone. Well, all I can say is that we need to create two classes of cats here. The domestic cat, which we can get, which, which, which is registered like the dogs and everything else and is trained the same way, um, and the responsible owners, um, you know, bear the consequences of, uh, of, of their lapses. But there's a whole other class of cat out there, that's the feral cat. And we really do need to start thinking about attacking them and not treating them all as, as if they're the same cat and they're the same issue. Because otherwise, you're going to have all the people like the, um, like councillor Chong, who go through all those lengths and all the rest of it, yet, you know, the, the bush is teeming with stuffs and, and in the end, what more would one, what difference would one more cat make in, in the scheme of things? So it's not a question, I, I think it's a question about, it's a bit like, um, the, the foxes. Fortunately, they were a phantom, but, you know, all the effort we put in, all the effort we put in over many years to try to, uh, a, find one, so in order to make sure we didn't have any. And in the meantime, the feral cat population is just bouncing out of control and everyone just quietly sweeps it under the carpet.
Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Walker, thank you.
Um, look, it's, it's been an interesting debate so far and I really thank some of the valuable contributions. Um, you know, we're sort of talking about these categories of feral cats and domestic cats and I suppose you can think of the feral, uh, on the peri-urban areas as, uh, you know, being mass creatures of devastation. But actually, those notionally domestic cats that are probably causing, uh, from a public health perspective, more of a concern to, to neighbourhoods. And this is, you know, if we're going to go with the binary, people would probably classify more as a dog person than a cat person. But I can, uh, certainly understand, um, the companion, the, the companion animal dimension through dogs and that, you know, many cat owners, uh, you know, this is a very valuable, uh, member of their family. And what this motion is, is trying to do is, is set some parameters and, and some incentives and disincentives. And we, you know, microchipping and registration is a incentive to not give a kitty for a Christmas present and then when you're bored of it, five weeks later dump it. Um, it's also setting guardrails about what community expectations are, um, percolating them and looking at the changes. And I think people are noticing that there are, are changes, uh, in, in how people that have cats are, are now thinking about it and, and responding. So this isn't mandating anything other than to say we have, have an issue that we want to start working forward and looking for ways. Um, if it was all just about politics, then, then masterly inaction would be the best course of action for any sitting representative, but that's not what we're here for. We're here for, you know, the betterment of our community. And as such, uh, thinking through that dimension, uh, I commend this motion and urge colleagues to support it.
Thank you councillor Walker. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Deputy, no, councillor Goine, your right of reply, please.
Thank you everyone for your contributions. I particularly want to, uh, count, uh, thank councillor Walker. Um, because it is, I know largely we speak about feral cat populations, but each one of those feral cats came from someone's home. They're not, they're not native to Tasmania. So each one of those domestic cute kitties ended up being a feral cat that then bred the population. And, um, cats at large, general domesticated cats, will actually kill generally on survey seventy-four animals a year. Um, and as we know, they do kill for sport, not just, um... And I would like to thank councillor Mulder for mentioning the Fox Task Force. My favourite, um, uh, mention of the night because that task force cost fifty million dollars to the state government, um, to not recover said fox. Um, whilst we could have been using that money to try and manage a real problem that is the feral cats. So I do, yeah, thank you everyone for your contributions and seek your support.
Councillor Goine, thank you. I thought the contribution of the night was your comment about the catastrophic impact.
I was going to reiterate that, but I wasn't sure if anyone would pick up on that one.
But, uh, so colleagues, um, um, we now have a, uh, the motion seeing in the name of councillor Goine, review of options for cat registration system. I'll put the motion, all those in favour. That's unanimous. Thank you colleagues. Moving now on to item nine point three, uh, uh, motion seeing in the name of councillor Mulder. Is there a second up? Thank you councillor James. Councillor Mulder.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I, um, I would, I have an amended motion, um, which, um, of course isn't in the papers, uh, but it results from, from discussions at the workshop. And basically the emotion is that, um, that, um, the proposal for the diary, something, haven't got it right, is that, that, the, the, the details of that proposal will be referred to a workshop for further consideration, uh, since the, uh, we ran out of time at the agenda brief to work through all the particular issues that were raised. So the motion itself, in its original form, is about transparency. And it's transparency of the formal meetings at which we, not only just the mayor, but all of us, may attend. And by that I mean, meetings where councillors, um, and council staff are present. Because that's what I would call a formal meeting and those are the important ones. We're not talking about where, um, some constituent comes up to you while you're having a cup of coffee and wants to talk about this, that or the other, or whether it was scheduled. These are the points where eventually something's going to come to council and there needs to be transparent. The Good Governance Guidelines issued by the Department of Premier and Cabinet stress the importance of transparency and accountability in the way we might go about making our decisions. And as the, uh, gen- as the, uh, so, as the CEO points out, um, that is of course subject to some issues where there's a high degree of confidentiality. But, um, whether they are reported or not, um, I think that's, those are the matters that, uh, we, we might take to the workshop. The model I was, I'm pursuing here is, is that, is that of one of ministers' diaries? Where state ministers, if they have a meeting with a lobbyist or, or an interested party who's coming to discuss some matter with them or some approach they're going to take, that matter is actually diarised and that diary, um, and, and those meetings are, by convention of, of, at least in the last two decades, those meetings are not only diarised, but you do not have meetings without advisers present. And that's the, that's the area I'm getting at now with where saying if senior staff of council are involved, then that's the sort of meeting that we need to be diarised. Because that's a formal approach for council to do or discuss or, or provide guidance. So, um, that's, I think, about all I really wanted to do. And I think at this workshop, we can have an opportunity to flesh some of those ideas out a little further. Um, and then, uh, and we can get towards consisting, getting some consistency in the kind of reporting that we get today.
Councillor James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and, uh, I think what's important in the motion is that, uh, it's a workshop for the purpose of developing a policy. Uh, and it includes the mayor and councillors. And I think, for me, the word and councillors is really important in this because we are in the public eye. We are privy to a lot of representations from developers. And the developers, by the very nature of knowing that the numbers around the table really what count. And by having individual meetings and in many circumstances, we are approached to meet and to discuss many aspects of what may impact upon the public and what may impact upon what decision is made in this place. So if the motion had have been just for the purpose of delivering a policy and singling out the mayor, uh, then I would have said, well, look, really, uh, I think the mayor being elected at the last election would know what is appropriate as far as meetings with developers and so on and discussing, uh, with the general manager, uh, senior executive officer, key matters that will be coming to council. Then that is the role, I think, of the, the mayor and the general manager, doing just that. On the other hand, if we are approached regarding a major subdivision and that is in the process of being considered, uh, will be considered by council and there will be, uh, proponents, uh, that will be needing to advise us or even seek our support, have a meeting in their, uh, office or somewhere outside of the general public's view, uh, then I think that needs to be itemized or recorded in this policy should it get up. What's good for the goose is good for the gander, in my opinion. And therefore it's, uh, the, and I think the numbers around the table, we have one vote. There's no casting vote for the mayor, we know that. Some, uh, councils on the mainland do have that and, and, and around the world in other places, they have that as well. But in Tasmania, we don't. So everybody in the nature of being, uh, one person, one vote in a decision-making process, then that person, whether it's the mayor or the councillors, they need to be able to be transparent and disclose any meetings with any of those, um, developers or any particular, uh, process or, um, uh, request that's coming to council. So I think it's got, has merit. It's to conduct a workshop. And at the workshop, you know, we may resolve to say, well, look, it's just going a little bit too far. And perhaps some of the councillors may be of the view that why should they necessarily be party to this? But let's have the debate. Let's at least have a talk, a discussion at the workshop. And if at the end of the day, the decision is that we don't need to be able to take this further, then that be it. But I think it's worthy of discussion, Mr Mayor, and I think it's needs to be at least brought out in the public because there may be a tendency for the people to say, you know, how did that come about? How was that decision basically confirmed, uh, at the meeting of council in, at this, in the, in, in a open forum? As this on such an important issue, when, uh, it appears that, uh, most of the councillors or all the councillors and the mayor were privy to it, but there was no, there was no disclosure of that meeting or anything to do with it in the public, uh, in the public arena. So I seek my colleagues' support for this.
Councillor Goine, thank you.
I didn't expect to be, um, speaking on this motion tonight, but I, I, I will not be supporting the motion this evening. Um, I believe that the mayor is more than transparent with what goes on. In fact, if you follow his Facebook page as I do, there's probably a selfie with every single one of his meetings that he goes to many times a day. Um, as a councillor myself, whilst I am more than happy to be completely transparent, I'd like to add that I am quite busy and council's, um, allowance is two hundred dollars more a fortnight than what I, you get on Centrelink and you don't have to report where you go for coffee and who you talk to. And as somebody who spends a lot of time with people in the community, nearly every person I would interact with would be a builder, a developer, a plumber, uh, someone who's a part of a program or half of the people I went to school with work here at council. Um, so if I was to, my next door neighbour works for the council, you know, if I was to log every interaction I have that could be deemed as an issue with council if it was brought up in a malicious way, um, then I'd be spending a lot of time writing diaries. Um, and if somebody wants to twist the intent of any meeting I have, they could. And if I wanted to hide it, I probably could just not include it in my diary. Um, so whilst I understand, um, and appreciate councillor Mulder's, um, wanting to bring this to workshop, I think there's far more pertinent things for council to address at the moment. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor Goine. Councillor Warren, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's hard to understand that anyone would vote against increased transparency, including, I'm sure, the mayor himself. Um, so I do thank councillor Mulder for bringing this, um, for further discussion, not for decision, at this meeting tonight. Um, look, the, the coun- the, the mayor's communications as presented to us, um, tonight, uh, tell us which meetings he attended, but not what the topic was. And I think that that's something that we're interested in. I know that the mayor has repeatedly said that he has an open door policy and his door is always open. I think that's more of a figure of speech than a literal translation. But I say this as an administrative efficiency. Because if 11 of us contacted the mayor and said, hey, what was that meeting about? And he had to meet with 11 of us individually to explain that information? Or if two of us met with the mayor to ask for further information, would that information then be shared with the other nine? So it, it's just an administrative efficiency to say, this was the meeting, this is who I met with, this was the topic, not necessarily the outcome or the conclusion. And I think where this is really important is that the mayor is the spokesman for the council, but he is but one vote at the table. So there are a number of matters where the mayor is meeting with government representatives or other bodies on our behalf. And as a council, we have made a decision. Our position is well known. There are other cases where we have not yet had a chance to discuss the issue, and we have not come to a position. So I want to be comfortable that the mayor is not making promises or, or other things that we have not yet had a chance to discuss. So just a brief note as to what the topic of the meeting would be, would be really useful. But it's, this motion is all about a workshop and discussing that. So I think that it's always worth increasing our transparency and avoiding any misunderstandings by providing extra information. So I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you councillor Warren. I wasn't going to participate in this debate, but I, but I now will sort of hand the chair over, even though I don't have to, to the deputy mayor. And firstly, just say that since day one, as mayor, transparency and good governance has been my key driver. And that is why I continue the practice of the former mayor of circulating the official events that I've been to, the meetings that I've had, as well as those councillors who have represented the mayor at, at different events, as been tabled this evening and as was circulated on Friday at the agenda briefing. And that will be, as I said then, the standard practice, and that may alter over the weekend. But you'll have an up-to-date version tabled here at a Monday, at a Monday council meeting. The speakers thus far have been correct into, to a certain degree, and that is that I am the spokesperson of council. There are statutory responsibilities that I have, and it is a significant honour to have been elected the mayor of this city nearly 12 months ago now. But if you like, as councillor James pointed out, there is only one vote, if you like, for want of a better terminology, first among equals. I have the honour of representing this, this council, this organisation, this community at official events. With regards to, and what I would also like to just point out, a couple of things in the, both the current mo, the amended motion before us this evening, but also some of the notes in the initial motion that went out to the community and is on the public record. So I will firstly just address point six in councillor Mulder's notice of motion. That's regarding the meeting that I had, that I was invited to attend, along with the CEO, with, with the premier and senior staff from the coordinator general's office and senior ministerial staff from the premier's office. Following that meeting, in the interests of good governance and transparency, I circulated a note to our colleagues. A colleague came back to me and asked, was this confidential? I said, no, it wasn't, because frankly, I was going to table it at the following Monday council meeting anyway. The next morning, I read about this meeting in the, in the Mokey. But then again, the distribution for me was only to colleagues around this table here. So there are those that may not wish to, you know, abide by certain rules of engagement, if you like. But from my perspective, I'll use analogy again, I see us as directors of an organisation with fiduciary responsibilities. And myself being honoured to be elected chairman, there's additional responsibilities that I have in that role. Also, in the initial documentation that went out on Thursday of last week at point five, there's a reference to, for a meeting, actually, I'll read it here. "The same level of transparency and disclosure was patently absent from a meeting with a major developer, Tipalia, developers of Gleep Hill, which appeared in the same mail communication, without any transparency as to the purpose, agenda, attendees, or outcome of that meeting." So for the record, as I said at the agenda briefing, and as I've said here in this council on many occasions, if there are any issues arising from the diary regarding meetings, please either ask a question in an open council, or pick up the phone, or walk through my open office door and talk to me about it, because I'm more than happy. There is nothing to hide. If there are privacy issues or confidentiality, confidentiality issues, I will explain that, I'll be upfront about it. And if I'm able to explain why that might be confidential, I'll also provide that information based on advice from the CEO or from Ms Shay. So with regards to the meeting on the 26th of July, which interestingly enough was also replicated in our minutes that we passed this evening, my meeting with Mr Scott Spanton. For full disclosure and transparency, Mr Spanton, who is Sydney-based, was coming down to Tasmania to meet with the Kingborough council for the $40 million development that, that he'll be developing, a similar Gleep Hill village development in Kingborough. He reached out to me and said, Brendan, I'd love to catch up for a cup of tea, a cup of coffee with you. Love to have a chat with you about what's happening Gleep Hill village, what's happening in Clarence, et cetera. I always like to make myself available, and I certainly agree to that opportunity. So on the 26th of July, we met in the foyer here of council. We walked across to Ryan Street Cafe at Eastlands, we had a cup, he had a green tea, I had a cup of coffee. I paid for it, because it's the least I could do for someone that has invested so heavily and has been a great economic and employment generator in our community. Nothing underhanded about that at all. But for full transparency, the issues that Mr Sperton and I discussed were security issues. At, and we're, Eastlands, mind you, where security has been ramped up in recent times. I also was keen to understand his experience at Gleep Hill village, particularly with the SAs and, and others. The growth of the businesses and the business performance at Gleep Hill village, pastoral upgrade, his planning experience with Kingborough versus Clarence, which I've got to say, both from him, both councils have performed well, which was excellent. But it was excellent to have that opportunity and for him to know that he could also get feedback from the, as to the impact that his significant investment in that part of the, part of their city was making and how it was viewed by council. So it concerned me to see that this was in the original notes. Councillor Mulder has assured me since then that there was nothing untoward intended by that. And I take councillor Mulder at face value then, I thank him for, for saying that on Friday. But it's actually out there in the public record. So it's important for me tonight that I be fully transparent as to what I discussed with, with Mr Spanton at that meeting. From my perspective, there's a, there's a ministry burden here. I will endeavour, as I said on Friday, to work with my EA and the CEO's office and the executive officer to have the diary settled by the Friday agenda briefing. So that then all colleagues have it in advance of tonight, at the Monday meeting. Again, any questions arising, ask the questions in here if you so desire, or pick up the phone, or as I say, just contact me, walk into my office, have a chat with me, happy to disclose. So it really is, you know, I note that the previous motion, we've got a six-month timeframe to get together to work through that more pressing and important issue. There are so many issues facing our city at the moment. There's something like this, from my perspective, nothing to hide here, but really, there's nothing to see here. And, you know, I'm not speaking against transparency, I go over and above to provide transparency. And in the nearly 12 months I've been in this role, not one person has approached me about an item in the diary outside of this meeting place.
Timed as well as everybody else around the table would be timed in their presentation. I haven't heard the bell go yet.
Well, they had five minutes. Okay, well, on that note, I'll take the chair back. Thank you councillor James. Did that feel good? Did that feel good? Thank you councillor James. All right, councillor Keane, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, the, I'm glad that councillor Mulder amended his motion because the amended motion is, seemed to have a workshop. And as far as I see, there's no harm in having a workshop. Had it been the original motion, I wouldn't have been able to support it. It does say for the purpose of developing a, a policy, which kind of implies it's a fair complete rather than considering a policy. But having said that, you know, we, we're not compelled to, to, to develop a policy or to adopt whatever comes forward. To be honest, I'm yet to be convinced that, that such a policy is necessary. It is a ministry of burden. I don't accept the comparison with ministers because ministers of the, of the Crown actually have decision-making power on their own, in their own right. Whereas our only decision-making power is around this table with our colleagues. I also believe that there are plenty of instruments to, you know, ensure that we act responsibly with good governance. We have a code of conduct, we have the ability to make declarations of interest. Should we have an interest in a matter that comes before council? And I also take the mayor's point that there is the opportunity to, to ask questions. If we have questions about meetings that he's held, we could ask questions of colleagues. And, you know, if, if you're, you know, if you want that on the public record, you can ask in the meeting. If you're worried about the limited number of questions without notice, you can ask a question with notice. But also, I, I'll, I'd be interested to see when we, when we have that workshop, the question explored as to, even should we adopt such a policy, how much power is there without the legislative backing? Because we're going to have a legislative requirement to actually compel councillors to disclose that information, should they not wish to. So it'd be interesting to have the discussion, and like I said, there's no harm in a workshop. But I am yet to be convinced of the need for this policy.
Thank you councillor Hume. Councillor Hunter, thank you.
Mr Mayor, I'm struggling with this one. At face value, it makes sense. Who doesn't want to support transparency? What I'm struggling with is I know where it's coming from. This stems from a lack of trust, and trust comes from fear. That's not a culture I want to support as an elected member. I haven't experienced a lack of trust in my time here. I have full support in all of you as my colleagues, including the mayor. He's been nothing but open, and I know I can ask him at any point in time. I know others around the table have really tested that and have been challenged by that. And to be honest, some of that to carry over from the last term. Let's put it out in the open. But moving forward, let's have a positive culture, one that's based on trust. I take councillor James's point about communicating with developers. That's something, as a new councillor, I've struggled with. And I've had conversations with the CEO about potentially developing a policy on how to communicate with developers, so it's really clear. Morton Bay Council in Queensland was one of the first to do this in the country. It spells it out really clear, when you can, when you should, shouldn't, can and can't speak to developers. I think that makes sense. It's not personal. It's not pointing out one particular individual about what they're doing or what they're not doing. It's based on trust, it's really clear. So while at face value, this is about transparency, I'm unable to support it because I know where it stems from. And that's not something I want to support.
Thank you councillor Hunter. Councillor, anyone else wishing? Councillor Kennedy, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And thank councillor Hunter for those comments, because I wasn't planning to speak to this at all. Because trust is, you know, that's what we're working with. And I look at the motion, and if the mood around the table is that we workshop this, we're going to have to allow a chunk of time, because I said to the mover of the motion earlier, I was actually lobbied really hard at a funeral the other day. How do I record that? How do I record that? So we're talking about the mayor and all of us around the table. Anyone can look at my diary, if you can read it, at any particular, if I can find it. At any particular time, I have no problems whatsoever. But this is all of it. This is not just the mayor, mayor and councillors. And if the mood is for that workshop, for us to work through those issues, to give us a basis where we do have trust in the diary entries. If anyone else has picked that up. So, look, I, I thank colleagues for their, for their comments. And it is a difficult one, but I take councillor Hunter's points on board. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. Any other colleagues wishing to contribute? Thank you councillor Walker.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The first that I became aware of the motion was on Wednesday when it came out on Teams. Now, I remember telly movies in the 90s, and they would often use the phrase, inspired by true events, as the basis of their production. And in some ways, I look at nine point three, that's now before us, as the amended motion, I think, inspired by previous motion, because it is significantly different from, from what was before. As the motion was originally drafted, I wouldn't be able to support it. But looking at what's here now, I think all, we should all be dispassionate about how it is written, which is around conducting a workshop for the purpose of developing a policy for public disclosure of formal meetings of the mayor and councillors with interested parties and council officials. It's an opportunity for this council to test the waters of what's done in other jurisdictions and other municipalities around this state. And I actually suspect around this state, we're going to, we're going to come up looking pretty good compared to most councils. I think that the, the flow of information has been very good in this term. I'm pleased that we still see the deputy, the deputations on behalf of the mayor is still abundantly made clear. We can, we can develop a, a table of favourites if we've got nothing better to do at that time by the end of the year. Maybe there's the opportunity for this, that we, that is circulated to us at the commencement of a meeting to perhaps form part of the minutes or form part of the, the next agendas. Maybe that's something we'll look at. But let's be dispassionate, let's, let's do this as an opportunity for, for what's, what's best practice elsewhere. And, and the fact of the matter is councillors are now in the mix here too. It might be a workshop where we need triple shot coffees to get through it. But if we do do that, and we get to the other end, then part of what we're doing is, if you like, giving a framework that can be used for future councils and possibly be adopted by, and that's us at Clarence, but also something of a template for some other councils. So I think to support this motion isn't to, you know, make a comment about how you feel this council is currently working or how the previous council was working. It's an opportunity, if you like, to put some things into place which, you know, you know, provide some, if you like, insurance for, for problems not to occur. But I think one of the really, really important bits that will come from this is the opportunity through a workshop, which wasn't part of the original motion, to really think about what are some of the unintended consequences. And one of the ones that really concerns me is around whistleblowing. How you might be able to raise concerns in a, in a situation where things get documented. Or, or other matters of proprietary as well. So they're, they're part of the things. And I know there was a mention of Gleep Hill earlier. And I do wonder if there is, you know, some sort of developer with a big hairy audacious goal, whether instead of just having the, the chat to say, is this within the realms of possibility for, to be considered by council? They might just think if this gets documented, then it's going to go out there and there might be a chilling effect on, on potential opportunities for, for the community as well. So please, yeah, please be dispassionate, please be benign, please think about what best practice is. And where I've arrived at is that I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you councillor Walker. Councillor Chom, please.
Look, as, as others, I certainly would not have supported the initial motion. And to be honest, I'm not unhappy with the level of disclosure that we have at the moment. And the fact that if I've got a question, I can ask it here, or I can call the mayor or send him an email or whatever to find out more information. But obviously, listening to the discussion around the chamber, there is a wide variety of feelings in this matter. Some people think there isn't enough, some people are quite happy. And I suspect really, for me now, I will support this because, this motion, because I think it's actually good for us to air all those views properly in a workshop and get it dealt with. So that whatever the views are individually about whether we get enough information or we don't, we need to consider the administrative burden of this, we need to think, consider what we would disclose, both for the mayor and for all of us, and how we'd make those calls about what we do. And we're going to do that in a workshop, we're not going to do that here. And we're going to do that in a workshop, we're not going to do that here. So I think to actually put this to bed, whatever the answer is at the end of the day, we need to support this.
Thank you, councillor Chong. Councillor Darko, please.
I was not going to speak on this, but given that I'll be voting in favour of the motion, I just wanted to explain why. I don't believe there's been any issue with the level of communication that we've received from the mayor, but I believe that discussing greater transparency is always a good thing, and that we can always strive to be better. And so in line with what colleagues around the table have said, I think it's worthwhile that we have a workshop to discuss what we're doing.
Thank you, councillor Darko. Oh, deputy mayor, sorry, apologies.
Like councillor Hunter, I've also struggled with this. Colleagues will recall from the workshop that I asked the question, what was wrong with what was currently in place? And I didn't get a particularly fulsome answer, and I think that's because I think there's a lot of speculation. I think there's perhaps a lot of views out there that are untested, feelings, thoughts, that I'm not sure have necessarily any credibility to them. That troubles me. I don't have a problem, of course, I don't think any of us would, from a principle point of view, of having a discussion around improving openness and transparency. But we've got to make sure that, careful not to leave aspersions or insinuations in the community, that we actually think there's a massive problem, that we need to be doing this. I actually don't accept that there is a problem. I'm quite happy with the circulation that I currently receive. I can deep dive if I want to, I can ask, send emails, written requests for more detail, and I'm sure all of those would be responded to promptly. Now, so that's troubled me from the outset, as the more and more I've thought about this motion, the more I've struggled to try to grapple with it. So I would like to, and I don't know if it's acceptable to the mover, I would like to suggest, because the way that it's worded at the moment seems to say to me that we will develop a policy. I'm not certain that in fact we will or we should, I don't know exactly the answer. And I think councillor Chong is right in saying that there is some broad ranges of feelings, I accept that. But perhaps, perhaps something along the lines of removing, considering the development of. So if we remove the word the purpose of developing and insert considering the development of, then I think that might give other people who raised, and I think councillor Hume raised that concern.
Can we stop the clock there, please? Is that acceptable to the mover? Thank you, seconda. Thank you very much. Now comes the motion.
Do I continue?
Yes, you do.
Thank you very much, Mister Mayor. So I appreciate the acquiescence of the mover, councillor Mulder, I really appreciate that. Yeah, that was, from a wording perspective, slightly troubling to me. Because what I'm learning is, I don't think that any of us know where this may land. So I don't have any trouble with the workshop. I do think we need to be really careful about what we're trying to achieve, and where it all lands and where it all applies. I think, as councillor Walker has said, there may be some other ancillary things that actually end up being rolled into some discussions. So I thank colleagues for their contributions and for the consideration from the mover. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor Mulder, before we move to you for your right of reply, I'll just read, as I understand, the amended motion. That is that council conduct a workshop for the purpose of considering the development of a policy for public disclosure of formal meetings of the mayor and councillors with interested parties and council officials. Is that your understanding, councillor Mulder, councillor James, councillor Ritchie? That now is the motion before the chair. We move to right of reply. Thank you, councillor Mulder.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and thank you colleagues for your contribution. At the outset, as a result of the discussions on Friday, I really limited this. There's been a lot of discussion about, oh, you know, I don't want to keep a diary entry every time I had a coffee. I am talking about formal meetings at which councillors or the mayor are present, as are other interested parties such as developers, and where senior council officials are. In other words, we're talking about, a very few, in all the years I've been on council, I've only done that ever once, and the mayor was present at that meeting as well, where we sat around and we discussed some of the planning and some of the development issues about, you know, a broad proposal. And all that was given was advice about, well, this is what the planning scheme says, and this is what the structure plan would do, and that's sort of a general meeting. And I thought that's the sort of very narrow meeting that I'm getting at. My reference to the De Palia Corporation was because it simply appeared as a meeting with De Palia Corporation in the minutes, and there was no explanation. As there is, I will concede for most of the agenda items. You look at down there, and there's a dash which says what the meeting was about. I raised it because it's not that I don't trust the mayor to be doing secret deals behind it, it's the fact that this becomes public, the mayors have a meeting, and there's a question mark as to what it was about. So that's why it is the way that it is. And, you know, and I won't go into the fact that, you know, I wasn't trying to do anything except drawing a parallel between the comprehensive briefing, which was not confidential, that we got off a meeting with a minister in which there was reference to the Shamrod Corporation. Now, if that's accountable, it was only later, on Friday, that I discovered it was nothing like an official meeting. It was a chat with a cup of coffee over several other council meetings. And I for one can tell you, I am not going to be presuting a diary every time I talk to someone, a developer or otherwise, unofficially. I'm talking about formal approaches. Councillor Hunter mentions the fact that, you know, she was more interested in developing a policy in relation to talking to developers in that unofficial context in which I was referring, in which is what, you know, this motion is not about. But can I encourage you to actually vote for the motion? And then you can raise that as one of the topics that we might consider, not only what the mayor communicates, but some guidelines for us when we're dealing with the developers, albeit they're not official meetings. So, I mean, we're meeting with developers all the time, every time someone, we go and do a side visit, for example, for a planning matter. You know, I'm not talking about those, I'm talking about those official meetings. And there is no administrative burden, the CEO is not
I think that was the bell, but I heard that quite Thank you, thank you councillor Mulder, and thank you colleagues all for your contributions. I will just, for the purposes of the public, both those in the gallery and at home, read the amended motion. That is that council conduct a workshop for the purpose of considering the development of a policy for public disclosure of formal meetings of the mayor and councillors with interested parties and council officials, standing in the name of councillor Mulder. I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Nationale, that's what I've done, colleagues, thank you very much. Moving now on to item number 10, councillor question time, there are no questions on notice, nor are there any answers to questions on notice, clearly. Answers to questions without notice, previous council meeting as listed in the agenda. Moving on to 10.4, questions without notice. Are there any questions from the floor, starting this evening with councillor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it was Saturday the 19th. I recall that the Acton Grosso ran market. And I just wondered if there were any approvals for that. Yes, it is private land, but I had a number of calls about the amount of parking that was taken up on the road right up to Silwan Drive there, and it was a little bit dangerous for people trying to navigate their way through. So I just wondered, referring back to the Harmony situation, whether this was something that had a permit or...
Thanks, councillor Kennedy. We are to answer, it'll take that on notice, Ms Olsen.
Thank you, that's fine, that's it from me.
Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Councillor Chong.
Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Sorry, excuse me. Yes, you may.
Thank you, sorry. About four years ago, some residents of Lordedale established a makeshift bike park at the back of Ross Common bordering on the Ross Common and the Equestrian Centre. I believe last week, council demolished the site and put up some signs about that. I just wanted to know if there was any plans in place to replace it with a council-approved alternative, or if and when the Lordedale Master Plan would possibly consider consultation into including areas like that.
Thank you, councillor Graham. Mister Graham, please.
I haven't heard about this one, so I'll take it on notice and advise councillors.
Thank you, Mister Graham.
And my second one is, we obviously all made, were aware of the excitement last week of the vagrant emu. And I believe we made some TV show, Dodgy Towns or something, because of our emu situation. That isn't the right name, but it's some TV show about, you know, topics of interest in small towns, I believe. I just wanted to know also, about 18 months or so ago, we had issues with a stallion, which for those that don't know, is a uncastrated male horse, running around causing some very testosterone-fuelled havoc around Lordedale. And I myself was the owner of a vagrant cow that took several days, thousands of dollars to hunt and dispose of.
This is going, this ramp.
Sorry, I just wanted to know that if I just wanted to know if council had or was considering establishing a policy to manage these situations? Because whilst they are few, they obviously cause some issues when they arise.
I don't know how testosterone-fuelled the emu may be. The stallion is also unused to me, to be honest. I think we'll take this one on notice, if that's all right, unless Ms Wicks wants to take credit for making Dodgy Towns, is that...
No, through you, Mayor, I'll have to take that one on notice.
Thank you. And councillor Graham, you may be excused, but please come back when you're in a position to, thank you very much, all right. Near a dull moment. Councillor Chong, please.
Thank you. Much more prosaic question, I'm sorry. I noticed in the quarterly report that there were some quotes being got for Gilsom Bay Boat Ramp, and I just wondered if we could have an update on where it's at and what's happening.
Thank you, councillor Chong. Mister Graham.
Through you, Mister Mayor, I don't know the full status, I believe, I think it's out for quotations at the moment. I'm not too sure of the closing date on it, but I'll advise councillors.
Thank you very much. Councillor Chong. Councillor Warren, please.
Thank you, just the one question. I've read in the media over the last couple of weeks that the Bell Reef Ferry Wolf has been sold to the government. Were we advised of that? I may have missed a briefing, but I don't recall any official advice to that effect.
Thank you, Suia.
Yes, thank you through you, Mayor. No, we haven't received any official advice, but I found out informally last week through representatives from Department of State Growth that it had been sold. It was effectively a private property transaction.
I just, I ask because frequently people request that Kangaroo Bay becomes the new ferry wolf. So is there a possibility of having some communication to that effect? That that is the future permanent home of the Cross Terrent Ferry?
I think we can assume that's the case, councillor Warren. The Crown has bought, as I understand it, what we refer to as the federal wharf for the ferry service.
Can we have some communication to the public, to that effect?
It'll need to come from Department of State Growth, I'm happy to ask for that.
So just to be clear, so the CEO will engage with DSG about any potential... It's obviously a decision for them as to what they communicate, that private transaction. Councillor Darko.
I was just wondering what our timelines were in terms of more detailed and more options for replacing the hardway services, particularly for residents for whom they have financial issues, such as not having a car or not having the capacity to go to Facebook Marketplace. In my view, the current webpage doesn't really outline very many alternatives, and I'd like to know how we're progressing in presenting more options that hopefully facilitate and encourage reuse where possible.
Thank you. And that's a question for either Mister Graham or Ms Wicks, but Mister Graham, you first, thank you.
Through you, Mister Mayor, from memory, a recent councillor response went out on that, but asset management will work with some comments in terms of our website and informing councillors and the community in relation to that.
Thank you, Miss Graham. Ms Wicks, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you, thank you, Ms Wicks. Councillor Darko, anything else? Thank you very much. So councillor Walker.
Thank you. Whilst I'm fully aware of the dealings and the planning, the logistics we have with other emergency management elements for issues such as matters like fire, my question is around, can council give consideration to being a bit more active in the space of informing people or linking up through our social media channels to disseminate information on, you know, best practices as far as hazard reduction in all settings, be they domestic or be they further wide, and how best to manage this? I think that there's a lot of concern around the summer coming up and what role we have or what we can do in that space. I think now is the time to be optimising it.
Thank you. And I just heard an interesting article or interview on Country Hour last week where that was dealt with. And of course, we both sit on the emergency management committee together, councillor Walker, and it is clearly front and centre of concern for emergency services as we head towards summer, when it's been a relatively dry winter. But CEO, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Thank you. Yes, it's certainly a concern at this time of year, as we go into summer. There is quite a structure in place between the state government and councils in terms of emergency management. So I'll take the question on notice, because it'll be a question at one level of, what activities are the state government undertaking and what activities do we undertake? But certainly there will be an overlap in terms of what information should we be making available and facilitating, you know, potentially through our website, social media pages and so forth. So I'll take that on notice and give you a more detailed answer.
Anything else, councillor Walker? Thank you. Councillor James.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, I have two questions. What is the procedure for non-executive members and community members to resolve issues related to the Alderman Statement of Expectations with regard to behaviour as listed in the document?
Thank you. Do you have an executive officer?
Sorry, I don't actually understand the question, because, and I don't understand the question because the document sets out what the process is.
Yes, but my question is in relation, it doesn't necessarily non-executive members and community members any regard to actually fill in the form and make a, and be able to have that issue resolved through the issues resolution, issues resolution procedure.
I still don't understand the question. The issues resolution procedure sets out a procedure for a councillor, an employee or a member of the public to raise an issue and have that dealt with informally or formally. I don't understand your question.
That's the answer for me, thank you, because
Your second question, councillor James?
The second question is, thank you, Mister General Manager. The other question I have is in relation to Mr Ian Sales' comments in relation to Spit Farm Road at Opossum Bay, and also to the expectation that there is a future golf course access to be built in Armend. My question through you to the acting manager of
Just ask me the question, then, councillor James, we'll establish procedures here.
Okay, thank you, Mister Mayor, thank you. My question is in relation to, what would it take for council to consider the actual ring road that was mooted some years ago in relation to the provision of that road to obviously lessen the impact on the actual Spit Farm Road? And would it take a rezoning of that area to include the ring road? And B, would it require also a structure plan?
Before I call on the CEO, Mr Sales emailed, I think from memory, Thursday, Friday of last week. I've organised for a mayoral response to him, or detailed response, I contacted him as well, and had a conversation with him where those matters were raised. And you're quite right, Alderman, councillor James, a great deal of work has been done previously. And when Armend does come online, it will clearly increase, as it is now anyway.
And, uh, when Armend does come online, it will clearly, uh, increase, as it is now anyway, with the popularity that part of the, that, that part of the peninsula. But also even with the, um, the reuse water scheme coming online, a, a lot more residential blocks will, will become available. It, it is a concern for all of us. May I suggest that, um, that we, it is, you've asked for a detailed response. I don't believe we're in a position at the moment to answer that as detailed as the, as the question deserves. So, and obviously every, every elected member will get a copy of my mayoral response to Mr Sale. But also I'd just ask that there'd be a more detailed memo, if, if there's anything else to add, to, to be circulated in the weekly briefing report. CEO, do you have anything else to add?
Uh, no, very good answer, ma'am.
Thank you.
That's fine, thank you.
You have two bites of the cherry, thank you. Uh, councillor Hugh.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, very straightforward question, the first one, and that is, um, who's responsible for, uh, clearing rubbish on highways? And if it's the Department of State Growth, how frequently do they do it?
It's a very good question. I'd like to start with the roadkill for one, but, uh, Mr Graham.
Uh, yes, uh, I don't know, but I'll find out.
Thank you.
And, uh, second question, ma'am, I, I just wondering if, um, even though it is a, a state government responsibility, um, have we maybe through our customer service staff, um, had any feedback from the public of, on how they've been affected by changes to metro services recently?
So, yeah, thank you.
Um, not that I'm aware of, um, but it's something I can follow up on and see if we've had any feedback.
Can I just, I'll, I'll just jump in here too, if, if I may. You would have all, you've all received the recording of my interview with Leon Compton on Friday morning. And also, uh, there was a joint Greater Hobart mayor's statement issued, uh, on Thursday that ran in Friday's Mercury. There's also Win TV news article, as you read our diary notes there. Um, there are, there have been some horrific stories that I've been made aware of from residents because of the non-performance, um, of, of the metro services. Clearly recruitment, um, and retention is a significant issue. To cancel from this week 180 services of two and a half thousand a day, uh, is significant. Uh, it, it, there is no doubt that's gonna have an detrimental impact on our community. Um, and, uh, yeah, from my perspective, I had a discussion, uh, with the former owner of Redline Bus Service on Thursday of last week, very timely, and the private sector can attract and retain bus drivers. Uh, clearly, in my view, metro needs to be doing a lot more to, to provide safety, not only for passengers, but also for their drivers. And pay conditions clearly is an issue as well. But it is unacceptable. We should be encouraging more public transport, uh, not, not cutting it back. So, um, for what it's worth, and they're, they're, no, you've been contacted as well, councillor Hume, by, by, by concerned commuters. But also parents whose kids now, because they're shift workers, are having real challenges, um, getting to and from school, particularly in the outlying regions of, of our, of our city. So I'll get off my soapbox now and turn to councillor Hunter, thank you.
Uh, they've all been asked for me already, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Mulder, is that the case for you as well?
In your dreams, Mr Mayor, in your dreams.
Rising to the occasion, thank you councillor Mulder.
Planning for approvals for Rosney Hill Hotel and Kangaroo, Kangaroo Boulevard were both approved some three years and two years ago respectively. Considerable time has elapsed and we have been consistently told that these matters are currently under a negotiation. In respect of each, Mr Mayor, what is the status of negotiations and whose turn is it to respond?
Thank you councillor Mulder, I'll seek some advice before we answer that. So as I understand, it's Rosney Hill and the boulevard or Kangaroo Bay site?
Kangaroo, Kangaroo Bay Boulevard.
The boulevard, okay. CEO?
Thank you, I can certainly, um, answer in respect to Rosney Hill. I, um, I had a draft copy of the leafs to proofread that today. Uh, that's now with Ms Shay to, um, take through to the next stage, which will be, uh, a referral through to Parks and Wildlife Services, um, the state government's arm of their land management. Uh, and, uh, back to, uh, Hunter Developments for their comment. Uh, so that is progressing. Uh, and I'd hope to, uh, have that moving to a workshop for council fairly shortly, uh, before the end of the year. Um, and in respect to, uh, the boulevard side, I'd need to take an update on that, uh, because I haven't had eyes on that for a couple of months now.
Second question councillor Mulder.
Respect to, uh, I was gonna say both, but clearly there's some moves afoot. Um, I, I assumed from your answer that, uh, we haven't had building applications for neither of them yet. Um, but in rely, in regard to, uh, the boulevard department, is there any indication that construction costs are now putting us in a position where, uh, many other developments throughout the state? Uh, you know, especially the prestigious end are now pulling out?
Uh, we haven't had any contact, um, in that regard, councillor Mulder.
Thank you councillor Mulder, deputy mayor, you have a question or questions? Excellent, all right colleagues, thank you very much. Um, that, we now come to the end of 10.4 and, um, uh, move now on, on to item 11, which is closed meeting. I'll call for a motion to move into closed meeting. Thank you councillor Warren, seconda councillor Chong. I'll put the motion, all those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you. Well, thank you to, uh, those members of the public who attended in person this evening and also to those joining us via live stream at home. Um, uh, we're gonna end the live stream now, but we welcome you back here in three weeks' time. Thank you and all the very best for a, for a lovely week. Please end the feed. Thanks Andrew Gray. Colleagues-